So that required a separate plan that also went through a process. And that was the learning continuity and attendance plan. That really also, a lot of these plans, although they're, they have different templates and some different nuances and specific requirement. A lot of what we're seeing is there is a lot of tie in with these plans. And I think we'll see that also as you see Mrs. Henry talk about the S R three. And that it's about what did we do to respond right to COVID and those needs? And at the time, and then also, what are we doing going forward? To respond to the needs of students and staff and our district just going forward? Especially around learning and maybe potentially learning loss, social, emotional, academic, all of those things that I'm sure Mrs. Henry can elaborate more on. But you know, those are some of the things that all need to be represented through these various plans that specify how we would be using these dollars towards those efforts.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. I just wanted the audience that is listening, because sometimes there's so many anacronyms that we use that, you know, they don't really know what they mean. So it's those for them and.
Absolutely. It's hard for us to keep track of all the acronyms.
Good luck. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on the summary? Okay, so I'm going to then go over. And did I switch over? Can you see now the? Yes. All right, big picture plan, the multi-year plan. Okay, so let me try to bring this down a little bit. So I'll start with saying, as you noted here, I have noted here, this is the second draft. We went over an initial draft of this at our March 30th budget study session. And that was our first draft. It just kind of really, the purpose of this document is to try to show in a summarized fashion over the several years that we have as we looked at for these various funds. We have next three years to utilize these dollars and putting together kind of a, you know, big picture plan of how we're going to use them not only now and how we have used them in this previous year, but how we will continue some of these actions and services into the, into the future years. So now we have, this is a, going to continue to be a living document that will keep updating. I keep updating every time something changes, which is constant and often by working together in our cabinet or E L T and just discussing the ever-changing needs. This is a document where we track all that. And so I've been doing that and will continue doing that also, as well as, as appropriate with the different plans as those get adopted and developed and adopted. I update those in here. So, and you'll see also here, I have the various years. So I have the year that just ended 2021 and then current year 2122 and the two years after that, again, going along with the timeframes that we have to utilize the funds. So for 2021, I'll point out that for the most part, the things that you, that you see here are pretty close to being finalized. They have just, the fiscal team has just pretty much finished going through the closing process and just tying up reports and those things that will be coming before the board at the next board meeting. So once I get all of that, I will continue to firm up these amounts and make these final amounts of what we actually expended in the 2021 year. But I can tell you, these are pretty close to getting there. So if I just go down to the end of 2021 here, you can see the 3.2 million in this year, in the 2021 year is about where we anticipate we will land with using up the COVID funds. And you see, if I back up here, I have these into, in various different categories. Human resources, you can see the categories here, facilities, personnel, safety sanitation, ed services and ed tech, student services, and then other, which is around equitable services for private school, as well as indirect costs that come back to the general fund. And so you can see, just coming down to the total of 31 million of either funds that have been spent or are in the works or that are potentially planned. Again, these will continue to be shaped and evolved as we work through the latest, the S R three plan and putting that together in the process that that needs to go through.
Ms. Aguilar, Mr.?
Yes, I'm sorry, I did not see the hand. Mr. Raw?
Sorry, I, this is fantastic. Thank you so much, Lizette. Very easy to read, very good layout. The questions directed more towards Mr. Fredrickson about two things that are on my mind than I, when I was looking at this, that did we overlook or has it been considered? The first one is, there's an old saying that came out, you know, when the government comes to you and says, here, we're here to help you run the other way. And the government has done essentially that to school districts. They have put onto the school district onerous protocols that they think are in everyone's best interest, and they may or may not be. I'm not here to judge that. What I'm here to talk about is the costs associated with those onerous requirements. And what I'm really worried about is I don't want those onerous requirements to fall on current personnel, teachers, staff, and so forth. So let's, let me give you a couple of thoughts and I'm thinking, for example, I know there's probably some onerous requirements regarding tracing. You guys are doing an amazing job giving us these reports about this kid was identified and then we found, how you guys are doing it, I don't know, but I know there's a lot of work involved in figuring out what kid touched, what kid, at what period, and so forth. That really can't fall to current staff. So can we have, is there a line item where we can hire? What I'm, I want to use the right terminology, Mr. Fredrickson. I don't want to call them low skill, but people that we can just, even if they're like 18 and just out of college or something where we can trade, teach them how to trace or things that are, duties that are falling on staff because the government's requiring it because of COVID, yet our staff doesn't have the time to do it. And I think some of these things, I don't know, I just think there needs to be a line item for this. And it, to me, to me, it's an urgent thing. And I think you're probably figuring this out right now, that people are probably overwhelmed. And I'm really scared for staff that they're all going to get overwhelmed with all these onerous requirements. So that's number one. Can we do a line item to hire a few people to do some of these tasks so they don't fall on current staff? Number two is, I'm really scared about, I worry about this, that other districts are pilfering off of each other because of low, because of the employment problem that we have. I think we, we should look for, and I know it needs to be negotiated, but like a one year or a two-year COVID type of, I know we did stipends for the teachers. It was negotiated and I'm very grateful and I'm sure they're very grateful. But I don't want to lose anybody to another district because another district waived a $50 bill in front of them and said, come over to us because we'll be really nice to you. I'm not talking about giving people cars or anything like that, but I'm worried about us losing people to other districts because of the unique employment time we're in and the unique COVID time that we're in. I think we're in a perfect storm to lose people that other districts are pilfering. So I don't know if that needs to be a line item, and I'm really not sure how to resolve it. I'm just presenting some thoughts that came into my mind as a result of COVID. And if you want to talk about it later, fine, I don't want to eat it up in a board meeting, but I didn't see those two items on here, but I am concerned and I'll leave it at that.
Well, Mr. Raw, first of all, I just want to thank you for acknowledging that. We must have been hovering over our leadership team meetings, our, our E L T meetings, because we're feeling the same way. And actually, we have been talking about that. If you'll see, I think Lizette has already put marks on it and we're calling it our COVID response team. So what we're looking at already, and I'll talk a little bit more about it in my presentation as we look at some of the new requirements coming up by October 15th of, you know, one, verifying that staff have been fully vaccinated or if they haven't, implementing weekly testing. So that is a huge impact on our existing staff. The other thing with that COVID response team is the number of contact tracing that our district staff have been trying to, and our site principals and their staff. It's almost overwhelmed us this last week. I think we're just like everybody else. So every other colleague I talk with is facing the same thing. So we have allocated 360,000 for that. They are, they would be classified employees and Didi is working on that as we speak. The other thing, we've also had conversations about some of our, well, all our staff are essential, but there were some staff that there was a shortage of and, and I'm not going to mention it because we're still in the works with that, but there were some essential staff that we are short in and other districts are recruiting away. And we've already started looking at ideas, ideas of a stipend, but we're in the process. I don't want to talk about it in, in open session yet because we're not, we're not finished with that. But Mr. Raw, you're right on and that's, that's where we're going. Was there anything else I should have covered in that?
No, I think I just wanted to point out and what I completely agree because personnel here, you can see if you look at this whole section is the largest portion of how we are utilizing these resources because there's just such a need.
Yeah. And again, I want to thank the board as well. I think I've done this in a board update already, just the support you showed us in our restructuring efforts this last spring. Already those restored positions, the amount of work that they have been doing to keep us afloat, definitely a very good allocation of resources.
Raw has a question. Thank you so much. Ms. Lindsay has a question and then it's also a time check. It is 5:25, so we have about 30 more minutes. Oh, no, that's okay. Just every, just like.
Just be real quick. I completely going a different way. And I know this is probably part of our goals, but going under, under the umbrella of social, emotional development and needs, we, one of our goals several years ago was to establish, you know, our schools, all our schools to be STEAM schools. Is there any chance of using any of this money to establish them as STEAM schools? Because they could deal better with the emotional and social needs of these children?
Well, right now, we don't have that identified specifically as STEAM. It would have to align with, again, whatever those funds were allocated for. If it was a way to improve learning loss or support social, emotional learning. Again, you've, you know, you'll see through our meeting today, some of the positions that I've modified, looking at innovative programs, those are kind of things we can look at. And I think Lizette will also talk about, you know, the, well, the different colored ones in here that we have encumbered for projects. That's kind of our, some of our emergency money. As we see other needs arise, we, since we haven't spent all those, they're in red here. She's highlighting them. That doesn't mean we're not going to do those projects, but those were things that we added on there when all this money got thrown on us last year. And we started looking at, wow, we'll get an account for $31 million. And so we started brainstorming, how can we use them on projects and things that are beneficial and yet meet the requirements? But we also have to understand these unexpected things that have been thrown on us, like the new independent study requirement and now the whole, you know, contact tracing and testing. So not that we're going to.
I'm not trying to throw another thing on you, Ms. Jared Fredrickson. I'm just, I just was wondering when, sometimes when, you know, the time is right, you need to strike. And these, these schools, you know, you provide different kind of equipment in the classrooms, which really do go toward the development of social and, and emotional development in a child. So I was just wondering if there was any opportunity down the road, if there, if we should kind of look at that as a possibility to at least expand our, our STEAM schools, not all of them begin to expand because we have, you know, only two. So it would be nice to be able to expand.
And again, I think that's why Ms. Aguilar said that these is a, this is fluid. This is a fluid document. I think as we go through these budget studies throughout the year and we start seeing the impact on some of these budgets, if the board wants us to look at some enhanced other areas, we can adjust.
I just threw that out there because it's important to me.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I think that this would be a good place where Mrs. Henry can speak to, you know, some of the, the plans and ideas as she works through the process for the latest and greatest plan, which is S R three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Henry, take it away.
Oh, I don't think we can hear you.
She's having technical difficulties. I'm going to pop over.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Lizette. Trustees and community members, tonight I will provide you with an overview of the requirements for the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, otherwise known as S R three plan. So we have a responsibility to make sure that we present the plan at a public meeting on or before October 29th. And this plan will have to be submitted for review and approval within five days of that adoption. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, next slide, please. You. So we will be sharing with you a timeline for submitting this plan in advance of that October 29th deadline. Next slide, please. So here, we've already been meeting, as Ms. Aguilar said, we've already been meeting with fiscal services. We've had two meetings thus far. We will have an opportunity as required to have meaningful stakeholder input for quite a period of time, over about a month and a half. And then we will bring a draft of the plan to our leadership team meeting to give another opportunity for administrators to be able to give input as well. And then finally, we would, we will bring back to you for board approval on October 26th, our S R three plan. So as Lizette said earlier, we have fiscal requirements that we have to meet. As you saw earlier, there was an 80, 20% split in the way that we use the funds. And so we have to make sure that we allot at least 20% of our funding for expenditures related to addressing the achievement, lost, impact of lost instructional time for our students. And that can be through summer school, it can be through extended day, after-school programs. And then we can reply, apply that remaining 80% in a way that's consistent with allowable uses. And for allowable uses, we have included an attachment of this presentation along with the template for the S R three. Slide, please. So the first program requirement is that we use the fan, the plant, the, sorry, the funds in a way that addresses, as we said, how we mitigate the spread of COVID-19. So it's the safety component of the plan, which has been presented to you earlier, well, at the end of last year. So we have to make sure in the plan, we address how we plan to keep kids and staff safe within our schools. Thank you. Next slide. And the second requirement is that we use the, again, the minimum of the 20% of those funds reserved to address learning loss that potentially occurred for many students, as we know. And then the third requirement is that the remaining plans, the remaining funds can be used to implement additional actions to address students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs, as well as to address opportunity gaps. One thing I'd like to say is these actions can already be included in another plan, such as our LCAP, our Local Control Accountability Plan, or our ELO Grant, our Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant. And if all funds are used, then we can indicate that we're not implementing additional actions. Like, thank you. And so a large part of this is making sure that we focus on what types of interventions that we will implement for students. And again, the interventions have to be based on learning loss, social, emotional, and other mental health needs. And we have to look at particularly how we're going to serve the students who are identified as being from low socioeconomic families, students of color, English learners, and students with disabilities, as well as students who are experiencing homelessness or in foster care. So as I mentioned earlier, we will have and have had stakeholder input as the previous plans, which were well-developed by the former members of the ed services team. They gathered a lot of stakeholder input, so we will be able to utilize that same stakeholder input, plus whatever we get during this other period we established in an effort to develop our S R three plan. So what's most important is that we are including voices of students, families, administrators, and site staff, and teacher leads and unions. So that information, that input that was held, that was gathered before will be a part of this plan as well. And this S R three plan will be aligned with the LCAP. Again, we're also required to make sure that we hear from other groups that represent the students that we serve. And one, one example of that would be when we hold our first district English learner advisory committee meeting in September, that we bring a draft or an overviewer to gain, to gather input from parents of English learners. But we definitely have to make sure that we provided an opportunity such as this for public input, which we will do that as well. And that's all in the interest of time that I had to present because Ms. Aguilar did such a great job of reviewing the funding that's available. And at this point, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
But everyone, no, thank you.
Yes, I do. I was looking back on page seven when you were talking about the possibilities of, of how to impact this loss of instruction. And will we be using like supplemental materials or will we be looking into state programs that, that are being offered? I mean, I understand that we're looking at, you know, a summer learning enrichment or an extended day or whatever, but I see that as a, maybe a way of helping children that are struggling, but I also don't see that as being a way of meeting some of the other needs. So do you, do you have any idea how we're going to address that, those things?
As Ms. Aguilar stated, our ed services team will be meeting to draft ideas of strategies that we can actually implement. Some of those allowable uses do include example of purchasing educational technology or software that would be able to help students. Another allowable use of these funds could include different types of assessments for us to be able to gauge where the students are functioning. And they also would then, within, offer a prescribed method of being able to provide intervention for students. So at this time, our team is going to go back and look at what the allowable uses are and what may best suit our students' needs here in Sylvan. So yes, there are other options. We just need to meet as a team and, and be able to discuss what those are.
And will these, these programs or these requirements be offered to all children in our district, not just, okay, because I know, you know, there's many, many children that, that don't fall into that other category, but that are really struggling and, you know, for whatever reason. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, we know that we have a range of learners in our district. Not only do we want to, not all students experience learning loss. There may be some students who have been able to excel in a technology, technological environment. So we do recognize that we want to provide remediation, maintenance of skills, as well as acceleration of skills, because we know that we have students who are identified as either gate or such. And so we do want to make sure that we're equitable in the way that we provide services.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome. My pleasure.
Has her hand up? Are there any other board questions at this time? All right, thank you so much. Ms. Aguilar, I think you're going with the template.
I know that I believe Mrs. Henry can correct me, but that was an informational piece for you to see what the, when you get the S R three plan brought before you, that's.
Got it.
Using that was required by the state. Did I get that right?
Thank you.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Right, see, our meeting with, yeah, I learned you too.
The more time we spend together, the better we'll be.
That's right.
Thank you so much. At this point, do any board members have any additional questions?
No.
No? Okay, Mr. Fredrickson, do you have any final thoughts before we adjourn the special board meeting?
Again, it's just, it's good to get an early start looking at these. You can see, we still have to work on getting our community input, stakeholder input, start looking at the ideas. Again, remember, we can also, we already have an LCAP written. So there's a lot of services and actions in that LCAP that will bleed into that as well. But, you know, I just, again, I appreciate the acknowledgement of some of the challenges we're facing, but just know that, that, that group of funding, we just have to be flexible with it. Because again, I think we've been using it for good. We've made a good plan and it's really been nice to know that we weren't impacting our general fund. Because that's where you usually get very stressed, when you have to make some tough choices, when you only have a limited amount of money. So I got to say, that pot of money over here, even though it comes with a lot of strings attached to it, has really saved us. We would not have been able to function without that pot of money. But again, I think each month brings a new challenge. So just, I think these, these, these board updates that we're doing and these study sessions will really help the board. We'll be jumping into our general fund later on in our, in our budget studies. And Lizette will be talking more about that timeline. She's still finalizing last year. That will give us a, a good read on where we're starting this year as we start having more discussions.
Great, thank you so much. I really wanted. Great. Thank you so much. I really want to appreciate everybody's input. Thank you very much for all your time and energy. And with that, we are going to adjourn our special board meeting on our budget study session at 6 o'clock. We will then reconvene in open session briefly, then not to be a Zoom, and then we will go to closed session via Google Meet, and we will meet for an hour. And then we will come back to open session at 7 o'clock, and we look forward to seeing you all at that time. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, everybody. Have a great one.